I want to thank you all for coming to the City of South Fulton Council Meeting. Mr. Kirk, would you call the others?
Mayor William Bill Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ralph.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Khalid.
Here.
And Councilmember Baker.
President.
With our certification by our cabinet, Pastor Henry qualifies as a pledge of allegiance.
Chairman of the council, if I may. I traveled on down to Huntsville, Alabama yesterday for the funeral service for Sarah Harmony.
Pastor Henry, Pastor Henry.
Yes. I'm sorry, thank you. Mayor of the city council. On yesterday, we had the opportunity to travel to Huntsville, Alabama for the funeral service for Sarah Harmony, the seventeen-year-old who was killed in a fatal accident on Cambridge Parkway and Murd Road. Councilman and mayor, I just wanted you to know that. Madison County Commissioner, Chairman Dale Strong, he said he's been watching us. They were national, and he said, "This one, we got right." And they applauded the City of South Fulton for the care that was rendered to their loved ones. Upon this, I'd just like to read that Sarah was a unique kid. And she wrote these words, she said, and I quote, "I have prayed, and I know God has called me to it. So whatever happens is within His will." God has called all of us to the City of South Fulton. And whatever happens is within His will. Let us pray. Thank gracious God, we are so grateful for the love that has been revealed throughout the world from the City of South Fulton, from the mayor, from the council, and all the citizens. We may not always say the right thing, oh God, but you always give us an opportunity to do the right thing. And when that time comes, the right thing is always done. You have reminded us that this is a place of love and grace and care. We have demonstrated it throughout. So because we are destined to do what we do, because you have called all of us, continue to pour your blessings and anointing upon our mayor and our council, but also, oh God, upon all the citizens of the City of South Fulton. This we pray, as you bless us tonight. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
Let us all stand. Ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion to approve or disapprove of this.
I would like to make a motion to approve or disapprove of this.
Senator. I want to remove the second in discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that passage is nullified.
We need to do actually to amend this motion to include the items from the work session that were moved from the regular reading agenda to consent. And that includes on page two of the agenda, under resolutions, item 2017-016. This is for medical, dental, vision, and life benefits for employees. Roman numeral two, a resolution. Adopting defined contribution plan and the 457B plan has been moved to consent. Item number three, a resolution designating the legal organ for the city. Roman numeral six, a resolution authorizing the city to request and accept due compensation from telephone companies. And those additional four items are being moved to the consent agenda to be approved along with the minutes.
I think those items, you just called them items out. I think the motion is okay. So at this point, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, that passage is nullified. I would also entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda we used to have the regular agenda for.
Certainly. Just the mayor, members of council, the regular reading agenda items under business will include Roman numeral four under resolutions, and that's a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2017 budget during the work session. Roman numeral five was requested to be held to the next meeting, which is on June.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven. And then all of the ordinances on today's agenda, under letter B, Roman numeral one, two, three, four, and five are ordinances that were, we just heard for first reading today and then again at the next meeting to be considered for approval.
So let the public know that the ordinances that be read will be for, what do we say, we're going. Information. Okay. I'll take a motion to accept the regular agenda.
Not to make a motion to accept the regular agenda.
I want to remove the second, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that takes you to the public comment portion of today's meeting. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each, and public comment allows each thirty minutes. We have received ten speaker cards. If the first three speakers would please approach the podium at this time, Ms. Angie Watkins, Mr. Greg Phan, and Ms. Charlotte Davis.
Good evening to everyone, Angie Watkins, South Fulton. So nice to be here, so nice to see you looking well. First thing I'd like to ask for, and I don't know that we do have it, but I'd like to see a certified boundary map. I know there are issues with D I S, but do we have a certified boundary map that outlines the City of South Fulton? The other thing, it's from my heart, so bear with me just a moment, please. I pray, and I honestly appeal to you, to whatever differences you all may have, work it out before you come to the council meeting. This is an honorable place, and this is honorable business. I was back here in the day, working in the People's Campaign, and worked with the Transition Commission, and worked at Pastor Henry's church for a whole year. We had one heck of a time together under Pastor Henry's leadership. And some of the things I've heard have not been good, but I beg and appeal to you, all of you. This is not about you, it's not about me, it's about the city. And I said to Pastor Henry, I said, "Pastor Henry, it's time for good old time revival. We need to come home, y'all. We need to go somewhere and just pray up this city and get our stuff in order. Let's do it right, just like the gentleman said, they've been watching us from wherever. So please, let's do it right." Thank you, thank you, thank you.
As always, in order. But I come tonight, as I'm Greg Phan, I'm the executive director for the employees of Fulton County, and I came tonight to speak to those issues that you have on consent. So I see that you've already approved those issues, but I certainly hope that as you continue to move forward and looking at the employees that you will bring over, that you will continue to do the right thing about employees as you've done tonight. I thank you so much. And as I always say, you know what I'm going to say, Mr. Mayor, God bless you, God bless your family, and God bless America. Thank you.
Good evening. On November eighth, 2016, Atlanta voters overwhelmingly approved two ballot referendums, authorizing investment and transit transportation infrastructure, one of which was the MARTA expansion within the City of Atlanta, which was to allow MARTA to purchase new buses at frequent services and introduce new bus routes, among other things. MARTA's response, to prioritize transitioning to a rapid transit commuter services. MARTA, on April sixteenth, MARTA has and will continue to make major service changes, affecting over thirty critical lifeline moves, eliminating fifty percent of the bus stops, eliminating major sections of existing routes, eliminating routes internally, thus eliminating access critical lifeline services within the City of Atlanta and the City of South Fulton, as well as relocating thirty percent of the remaining bus stops to questionable locations. Many on-demand bus stops have been relocated into questionably accessible as well as dangerous locations, on grass and yards, away from corners, away from streetlights, away from crosswalks, away from traffic lights, into the middle of the blocks, meeting with personal mobile units with now limited alternatives, must literally wait in the streets. It is very unclear what definition and criteria of unsafe or safe MARTA is utilizing in determining bus stop placements. The community was only told there would be modification, not major service changes, and given little and nothing, no detail of elimination or relocation of any bus stops. No visuals were and are currently available for public access of these modifications, comparing the old versus the new, no overlays. Prior to even considering making major service changes, MARTA is required by law to obtain the input and consideration of lifeline needs of the community MARTA serves. There's nothing in any documents that were and are currently being presented to the community that shows the elimination of bus stops and the relocation of any of the remaining services. MARTA is supposed to have hearings. Documents provided of these hearings are inadequate in this meeting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Did you hear your name? I didn't hear your name.
Charlotte Davis. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Mr. Harold Reed, Mr. Roger Davis, and Mr. Linda Collins.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Harold Reed, and I reside at seventy-five twenty-one Colleen. As you pursue your review of the zoning resolution of the City of South Fulton, I urge you to consider the implementation of an impact fee structure for new development within our city. Impact fees have been used successfully and effectively throughout the metropolitan area as an adjunct funding source for infrastructure and transportation enhancements and improvements. As we are currently in a growth mode with regional projections for this growth to accelerate over the next fifteen to twenty years, we need to begin to plan now for the influx of new residents expected in the area over that period. We deal ourselves as a destination, but we must be ready for the people when they get here. Tis plausible might last forever. Thank you.
Good evening. This is for mayor and council. With all the accidents that have been happening lately in the area, that on state-controlled roadways, are there any plans to reach out to GDOT to have them come out to review the roads and situations out here?
Following Ms. Linda Collins, Mr. John Ross, who's from the Propose Federal Credit Union, and Mr. Eric Bell.
Linda Collins, morning, please, ma'am. Hello, mayor and council. My question is regarding the budget for twenty-six million seven. The county, I understand, as of the last meeting, needed us to pay six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Now, will those funds be, will the budget be realigned, or will the funds be taken from the borrowing money? If the budget is realigned to pay Fulton County and other unexpected charges, how would the city be able to function financially for five months? And on the AT&T telephone, does this comply, the three percent, does this comply to landline and cell phone, or is this landline only? Thank you.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor William Bill Edwards, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and City Manager. We're here tonight to announce something very unique, something very special. But more importantly, I want to say to you, Mayor Edwards, that you've gone around the city saying to us that the government ain't our dad. You remember that one? That the government ain't our dad. You remember that one? Boy, you know you're going to be facing unlimited resources, you know you've still got to be charged with finding ways to help your distinction live a better life and to increase access to capital for all people in South Fulton. And that's one of the reasons we're here, to announce a potential solution here that Dr. Tracillo will share, ways that you can address that.
I'll be very brief. We have a huge opportunity to respond to the needs of all of our citizens, especially those who will want to grow and develop financially and to access capital through the support of Councilman Martin Baker and the opportunity that the City of Fulton County, as well as the City of Fulton, as well as College Park. We have this opportunity to open doors on a credit union that will serve your citizens and citizens throughout the College Park area. And those doors are, can be opened in, in 2018 to serve all the citizens in South Fulton, as well as the College Park area. And that's the solution, not only accessing capital, but education, utilizing financial services. Thank you.
We wanted to thank Councilman Martin Baker for really sitting down with us because he recognized the importance of doing everything he can to increase access to capital to meet the seven districts. So we appreciate you, councilman. Thank you.
Following Mr. Eric Bell, Mike Taylor, and Mr. Don Windshus, that are the last two speakers.
First, I'd like to give thanks to God, our honorable and noble Father. Second, greetings, mayor and council, South Fulton. My name is Eric Bell. For three years, I've been organizing the local police department, as well as the Chick-fil-A at the door house. And for three years, we've sponsored the Back to School Bash at Skate Town. This year will be on Saturday, August third. Our goal is every year to give away five hundred book bags to students of the South Fulton, South and South Fulton metro area. And I'm here to ask not only the council, but also the citizens of South Fulton, to help out and actually donate or do what they can to make sure that every child in our county has a book bag and school supplies they need to start school with. You can find more information on our website, that is bellforus, B-E-L-L-F-O-R-U-S dot com. And I'm always available to help. Like I said, I've been doing this for three years. We just want to reach out, get this out what they need. Thank you, and keep up the good work, though. The world's watching. Make us proud. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Mike Taylor, City Grove Community Association. If you had a consider already, I'd like to consider starting a Nextdoor agencies. And one of the things, we tried to do that in City Hood campaign, but while we were inhibited because we didn't have a dot dove email address. We do not. One of the things that would, you know, Nextdoor agency allow us to do is to keep in contact with the people, most of our residents are plugged in to Nextdoor somewhere or another, every day, practically. I'm one of them. And that way, you can send out information to them, for a moment, especially like a meeting of this sort, or any spur of the moment information that you would like to share with the citizens. It's not going to replace the website, but it will supplement it. Thank you.
Mayor and council, good evening. My name is Don Windshus. I'm here tonight representing the Old National Merchants Association. And I want to make you aware that the Merchants Association has drafted a comprehensive strategic plan for economic development of the Old National Core. This is about the rebirth of Old National. And we look forward to sharing the full plan, as well as meeting with you to get your individual comments, suggestions, and ideas on moving forward. In fact, we're already moving forward. We're moving forward on three fronts. This plan covers three fronts. One is business climate. What is the climate for business on Old National? That's physical climate, as well as social climate. Image and perception, and finally, recruitment, expansion, and retention of businesses on Old National Core. This plan includes such items as dealing with cleanliness and beautification, dealing with the recruitment of businesses, keeping the businesses that we do have. Public safety, but not only public safety, but when we have triumphs in the public safety arena, to get the word out about things that we're doing positively. We realize that we can't do it alone, so our partners, we're reaching out to. Our strategic partners include the Urban Land Institute, GDOT, Development Authority of Fulton County, Aerotropolis, Old National Area Residents United, and of course, the cities and all the local governments, state government and federal government. So we are reaching out to all of them individually. We've already had some commitments from the City of College Park to do some things up on their end. So we look forward to getting back with you, meeting with you individually to lay out the plan. You've had the pleasure already of meeting with Mayor Edwards and Councilmember Khalid. And we'll be reaching out to you as well. We're excited about it. The difference is, this is a methodical, sustained approach to the rebirth of Old National. We look forward to laying it out for you. Thank you for your support in advance.
I would like to, we could adjust the agenda a little bit, and to talk about the resolutions, the franchise resolutions, those things upfront. The ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, the first proposed ordinance you have involves Georgia Power, and there are several others in the franchise area. I'm going to defer to my colleague, Brian Lake, to walk through those for the council.
The first ordinance I believe we're looking at is the proposed ordinance adopting or approving the franchise agreement with Georgia Power for electrical services in the county. This is set up to be a thirty-five-year term agreement. The franchise fee paid would be four percent of gross sales. The payment plan is set up to be paid annually, every March. The first year payment, there has been a discussion with the provider, Georgia Power, to make a one-time advance payment. That is not laid out in the franchise agreement itself, that it would be executed in a letter of understanding once the franchise agreement is finalized. The franchise agreement is also dependent upon finalization of all the addresses within the city, being basically cross-referenced with the records of Georgia Power, which is currently ongoing. We've provided information to them and contacted them to get that finalized, but it is not executed yet. Are there any questions? I would like to say that this is an ordinance, this is not up for adoption this evening. This is being provided for informational purposes, not to be adopted.
Can you proceed with the rights file?
Yes. The second franchise agreement that would be considered, or the ordinance adopting a franchise agreement is for Greystone Power Company. The essential terms of this agreement are virtually identical to that of the Georgia Power agreement. It is a thirty-five-year term, four percent of gross sales, paid annually. There has similarly been a discussion about a one-time advance payment by the, by Greystone of some of the franchise fees. That is not reflected in the agreement, that is an agreement of principle dependent upon final execution of the agreement. I believe an individual from Greystone is maybe here this evening, I didn't see him earlier, but may be available if he wanted. If there were additional questions outside the terms of the franchise agreement, or the proposed franchise agreement.
Does council have any questions about the things that Greystone brought up? If you want to move on to the table, to the other franchise person.
The next ordinance proposed for your consideration, again, provided for informational purposes, is an ordinance basically authorizing the city to collect franchise fees from video service or cable service providers operating in the city pursuant to statewide franchises. Because in the local franchise agreements, there's a state statute that allows any video service or cable service provider to operate within a municipality or any part of the state pursuant to a statewide franchise. The local government then passes an ordinance authorizing the collection of franchise fees, the payment of which and all other essential terms of the agreement are governed by the statute. The Consumer Choice Television Act governs these terms. But this would be an ordinance if passed, would be attached basically to a letter of authorization sent to any video service provider or cable service provider operating pursuant to a statewide franchise to collect the fees. The fees would be five percent, paid quarterly. Again, standard is up by statute. Any questions?
If you can take a five percent paid quarterly agreement. I have other questions. The council may have other issues, the ordinance, twenty seventeen dash six. Have a, if you can address adoption of the taxation ordinance.
If I would refer to that.
Good evening, mayor, or members of council. The first, the first proposed ordinance, again, for informational purposes only, is a general taxation ordinance. We went through this in some detail in the work session. I'll go through it a little more briefly this time around. If adopted at the next meeting, the ordinance would establish the millage rate. It would be at the same rate as Fulton County currently has. It would set up a process whereby the Fulton County Board of Tax Assessors, as it does today, which has established the value of the property, the millage rate would be applied, and there would be a procedure by which, actually controlled by state law, taxpayers could appeal that, and so on. This is merely the means by which the tax could be collected and the assessment of the property itself. The second is a hotel and motel tax, which is set as proposed at seven percent, with three percent being able to be retained by the innkeeper, which is also covered under state law. This is something that is currently in place in most cities and in Fulton County itself. There are provisions in this part of the tax, as well as others, that allow due process for any person who is alleged to have not remitted the tax to the city. They would have a means to appeal that decision first at the city level, and then at the Fulton County Superior Court. The next would be a rental motor vehicle excise tax, or rental excise tax, which is a three percent of the rental charge. This one has to go towards specific things, which include public safety and the promotion of industry trade and commerce within the city. So that would be a separately accounted-for tax fund. Next would be the insurance premium tax, both on life insurance and on other forms of insurance. This rate is established by state law. And the way this one works procedurally is, if enacted by the city, the state insurance commissioner would be placed on notice that the ordinance has passed. The insurance commissioner would collect that tax and then distribute it to the city, as he does to other cities throughout the state. After that is the financial institution or bank tax. This too is established by state law, which sets out fairly detailed provisions. This too is established by state law, which sets out fairly detailed provisions on how it is to operate. And its rate is established in the state law provisions as well, at 0.25% of the gross receipts of the bank itself. That would be consistent with the current provisions in Fulton County. And unless there are any other questions, I can go on to the next one, which is the business and occupation taxation ordinance.
Please, if I may, if I can, I can record the action that was taken in the work session.
Oh, after, okay. The next one is the adoption of business and occupation taxation ordinances. The last set of ordinances we discussed, for a host of reasons, are based on kind of melding together Fulton County's existing ordinances with those of other cities within Fulton County. This one is based largely, much more so, on Fulton County's existing ordinance because that provides a level of continuity and ease of transition for businesses within the city. This one establishes a business license or business occupation tax or fee. And this one, unlike the other ones you'll see, there's a fair amount of deferral to the city finance director as city tax collector. Many of you know, when you go and establish, for example, a business on the Secretary of State's website, it will ask you at some level for an NAI-CF code. That is a national code standards. And most cities in the county, in fact, base their business and occupation tax first on that code and then on the revenue of the business itself. This proposed ordinance does the same, and it would allow the tax collector and finance director to come up with the provisions that would apply to establish the tax per business as it is currently run in Fulton County and cities throughout the county itself. Like the other provisions of the taxation ordinance, it does provide due process for taxpayers, as well as penalties for failure to pay and delinquent taxes. There is an exception under state law for certain professions. Physicians, dentists, psychotherapists, et cetera, engineers. They each have a separate one, and that is a separate one set based on state law. That's reflected in this ordinance as well. The remaining provisions of the ordinance are largely what you see in any of them. There's a severability clause and an effective date, which can all be amended before the next meeting of the city council.
I believe Mayor Protem requested, Mr. Mayor, just before you joined us, to state that all of these ordinances, if I understood correctly, at the bottom of page two, beginning with Roman number one about Georgia Power, and then all of the ordinances on page three for Greystone, for cable and video franchises, for the taxation ordinance, and for business and occupation tax. These are being presented not only to members of council, but also to the public at large for first reading today. And then you will have them again on your agenda, at your next regular reading agenda scheduled for June 27.
I specifically wanted to address the request by council to look at those occupational fees compared to other municipalities.
Any further discussion? Okay, so the request was, a motion was made by Councilmember Ral, or Mayor Protem, and seconded by Councilmember Giliard, to request the CFO to do a, an analysis of the fee structure for each of them and to bring them back to council, and that motion was passed unanimously. Okay. Councilman Baker.
Just for the, excuse me. Just for the verification of any of those, my constituents who live in Martin Loop and have EMC, can you, councilman, just explain what's going on with EMC?
Yes, there's a, there's an additional Calwita EMC, Calwita F.A. EMC that provides power services within the city. We have been in contact with them. We anticipate that their franchise agreement with, that A, there will be one, but also B, that it will be substantially similar to Georgia Power and Greystone as those terms are set in many ways by state law. We heard from them today and will look forward to presenting something to you very soon.
Any further comments? Having here done, may I have said, I would like to do this. Let me hold the existing addendum, because there's a personal issue that we need to talk about in these executive sessions. I'm holding that existing addendum. I left one there. Is there any other business? Hearing none, I'm going to do a contest. I would do it differently this time. We'll go from left to right. Councilman Baker.
First of all, I'd like to say, to begin my comments of District 7, thank you for all of the support and the condolences while I was out of my reading. Really appreciated myself and my family, all of the calls. It showed that you were concerned. I really appreciate it. Just to update what's going on, or what's been going on in District 7. Cornerstone Fellowship Church celebrated 21 years on last Sunday with Pastor Mark, who I think was around earlier. But also, I wanted to point out that we did have a 5K run and walk race on last Saturday with transforming youth. And it was a nice turnout. I finished in fourth place out of everybody. I finished in fourth place. I would have been in third if my wife wasn't calling me on the phone while I was running. But I did survive the run and walk, and I appreciate everybody's support in coming out. Next, I wanted to let Pastor Lockhart know that I haven't forgotten about Camp Valley and my communications for Camp Valley directly will be extended further directly through you and Mr. Sharad as well for the scholarships that were given out over the past couple, I think it was about three weeks ago, for the CNA. And I'm going to give, I'm going to extend that opportunity to all the young people between 17 and 29 at Camp Valley, those four scholarships. If they're interested, and I'll provide that information for your subdivision newsletter as well. Also, if there's any businesses in South Fulton that you guys are aware of that are willing to take on apprentice, please notify me. I have a program where as I can get funding for those businesses to hire and take on apprentice, whereas they won't even have to pay them for up to six months. So we're trying to get our kids employed. We're trying to get them working, and I just need you guys to assist with that. And if you found one on your seat, I did have a sheet. One of the apprenticeship programs that is already up and running now for Nick J's auto shop, where we have spots open currently. If you would call the number at the bottom. He has an apprenticeship program that's currently working with conjunction with him to bring that to our young people in South Fulton. So please give him a call and please pass that information on. And that's it. Thanks.
I would just like to, I'm Rosie Jackson, would like to thank, once again, my, well, all of you for coming out. The mayor says this is the entire South Fulton, so I'll say that. I'm not going to say District 5. I'll take the talk to you all in a minute. But I just want to let you know that I will be riding with Code Enforcement in the morning. This is District 5. And if you have any concerns in that particular district, you can give me a call at 678, what's my number? 678-849-5437. And we're going to ride the entire, our district. And if there are things that you need pointed out, then if you would give me a call. But I have some concerns already for myself. But we are going to be riding tomorrow, and I have a call in the Public Works as well. Those, we have some overgrown grass in a lot of different areas. And one of my plans, what I did say, we wanted to clean up our area in South Fulton, and that's what we are beginning to do. And on August the 5th, 2017, we will have a back-to-school jamboree. We're inviting everybody to come out and join us. We are going to block off the Burdette Road area from Burdette Bridge, bridge housing down to the other part of it, by the baseball field, the old baseball field. But we're going to have a good time. We're going to put our children back to school, and we're going to try to put some of our parents to work. We're going to have work source development there as well. And I would also like to announce that Fulton County will start a front porch roll call when our police will come into our areas and into the communities and do their roll calls from there. And we need, have the need for the presence of our police officers. I might be announcing something that they didn't want to hear today, but I heard it last night. And we're going to have it first at Melanie Manor in July. So we'll be our first choice. Anybody in District 5 that would like to have them come to do a roll call in your area, if you let me know, I will make sure that the message gets passed through. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the city council meeting, to all the residents. I do represent District 3. And I want to know that I hear your concerns about the recent tax assessment notices that went out. And I want to reiterate that the tax assessment notices have nothing to do with the city of South Fulton. But I am collaborating with our district commissioner in District 3. And there will be a tax assessment town hall this Thursday at Welcome Mall Park from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. There will be an employee for the tax assessors office that will be there to answer your questions and your concerns and will assist you in filling out appeals if you feel that it is necessary for you to complete one. So please, come to Welcome Mall Park if you live in District 3 or if you live in District 2, it doesn't matter. But I wanted, there are several meetings that's being hosted throughout Fulton County. And I wanted, I wanted them to have a meeting at Welcome Mall Park since many of the District 3 residents have been concerned about their recent tax assessments. We had a successful 5K at Welcome Mall Park this previous Saturday. We had over 600 participants. There was the Greek Letter, the Black Greek Letter Association that was there. And they raised money that will be used to benefit youth programs and children in the community. So that was the second event, annual event. And I'm looking forward to them coming back next year with even more participants. We also want to announce the summer youth internship program that's being sponsored by the county. It's for people with the age, between the age of 16 to 24. And they are giving paid internships for the period of June 15 through August 1st. And with 30 hours a week, guaranteed 30 hours a week. So the deadline is June 20th. So please, if you have any youth between the age of 16 and 24 that is seeking employment and want to make some money over the summer, please check with Fulton County. You can, you can also go to my website, send me an email, and I will get the, I'll send a flyer to you. I've shared it on my Facebook, but if you don't have Facebook, send me an email and I will send a flyer to you. I want to thank, at this time, public safety, the fire, and police for helping with the tragic accident that happened last week. What I will say to you is that the accident did happen in District 2, but the victims and the families were triaged in District 3. And Reverend Henry, he did an outstanding job hosting the families. He did an outstanding job, long beyond the call of duty, visiting the victims in the hospital. Our public safety team, they collaborated with multiple municipalities. And what I would tell you is that you would have thought they went through this in the form because they were able to transport over 40 patients to multiple hospitals within 30 minutes. It was something that I had never experienced in my life. But what I will tell you is that the training, not only do we have a well-trained public safety on the fireside and police side, but we have experience. And if anything else, we need to do whatever we can to keep that experience in our county. We also have an experienced mayor, and that showed because as a newly-elected official, I would not have known what to do, what to say, and how to comfort families. I intended to go home and go to bed, but my mom told me to call Reverend Henry to check on the families. And he told me the families were at his church, Kingdom of God, and I needed to come down. When I got down there, there was luggage everywhere. There were people walking around in bandages, bloody shirts, and slings. And the young lady who died, her family was upstairs crying. And the leadership from the mayor, Reverend Henry, and also the police department really showed that night. And I really want to commend them. I want to thank them. I want to thank the person who helped, Mayor Edwards, with the media protocol. We assisted that they not talk to the media, but they wanted to read the letter that was written by the young lady who died. My mother gave it to me. And the mayor immediately got on the phone with a person, and they gave us media protocol. And our, the first thing was to take care of the families. The second thing was to protect the image of this city. And I think we did a darn good job. Thank you. Thank you. If you have any questions or concerns of me in District 3, please send me an email. I have a sign-up sheet in the back with your contact information. I have a newsletter I send out bi-weekly. And I also send frequent updates if I have something I want you to know. So please, leave me your contact information. And if you have concerns about your tax assessments, I will see you on Thursday at Welcome Mall Park. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm ready to greetings from District 1. A couple of quick updates. Our southwest regional library is undergoing renovation. If you have some ideals about what you'd like to see with those renovations, I encourage you to weigh in with, with the county on that. It's a multimillion-dollar renovation. And we want to make sure we have best in class in District 3 and across the city. Secondly, I had the opportunity to go on a code enforcement ride along Fulton Industrial as well as District 1 with Anthony Mullins. I want to thank him. He did an excellent job, and we were able to discuss some things we can do to strengthen our code enforcement in the city of South Fulton. So stay tuned for future recommendations and policy changes around that. I also had the opportunity to be hosted by the Sand Town Center, HOA. Great questions, great engagement about changes in the city and sharing their ideals. And on this coming Thursday, myself and Councilwoman Guns will be at the Camp Creek Business Association meeting, speaking at 8:00 a.m. And that'll be at the Holiday Inn Express, right behind Walgreens. And for those who called me regarding the MARTA expansion now, Caskey Road to Fulton Industrial, many of you may know, was causing some major problems in terms of turning around at the end. They've gone back to the original route. And we have an upcoming meeting with MARTA to understand some of these proposed changes in effect you'll have on the city of South Fulton. So we'll be providing an update on that. And last but not least, I'd like Kimberly to give a quick update on the letter that was sent to the county from the city regarding the Walton Warehouse Project.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Just so everyone knows that there's been some zoning issues with the warehouse and Fulton County Board of Commissioners considered it last Wednesday, I believe. It failed, or it failed for failure to obtain four votes either way. I believe it was 3-3. They, Fulton County asked us to give an opinion about a Supreme Court case dealing with billboard signs. I provided that letter to Councilwoman Ral and, and basically explained that we don't think it applies and we still maintain our position that Fulton County does not have the authority to make decisions, the Board of Commissioners does not have the authority to make decisions regarding property located within the city. And we maintain that position.
Thank you. Okay. First, I would like to thank everyone that came out to our town hall meetings that we had for District 2. had for District Two and District Three over the past couple of weeks. We had great turnout, we had some great questions, we look forward to doing that again, so again, thank you for coming out for that. Also too, again, just only condolences to the families that were a part of that tragic incident that occurred in District Two. Again, we worked together as an entire council and a city to make sure that these families were treated with care. So, again, the public safety, all of the leadership throughout, you know, the city of South Fulton, they did an excellent job, and then all the other municipalities, we worked together, so I was really happy to see that. On another note, District Two's Community Fun Day will be this Saturday, June 17, February Lea Ranch, 3265 Budger Road, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. I encourage the community to come out and meet your neighbors and enjoy our community. It's a day fun, build activities that have been planned, and there will also be a Father's Day competition, real competition, so I encourage you all to come out for that. Also, June is Men's Health Month. How many of you were aware that June is Men's Health Month? All right, good, good, good. So, as a health advocate, I encourage our men, definitely in the city of South Fulton, to go see their doctors and get checked out. On Friday, June 16, everyone, I am encouraging everyone to wear blue. We're gonna call it Go Blue, and that way you're educating the community on preventable health care for men. And I look forward to you all participating. What I am asking you all to do is to take a picture in your blue. If you have social media, you can tag me, the hashtag is GoBlueCOSF, which is Go Blue City of South Fulton. And then I will recognize you and make sure that you all have that information, but this is a way to show you and teach to our community for Health Month. As Councilwoman Raul mentioned, we will be at the Camp Creek Business Association on June 15. All the business leaders in the community will want to see to let you know that South Fulton is almost open for business, so I would love for you all to come out for that. And also too, I would like to wish all the fathers a Happy Father's Day. This will be my first Father's Day without my father, so I understand a father's love is immeasurable. So, I'm wishing you all a Happy Father's Day and to also enjoy your day and have a great weekend. And lastly, I know that I have a lot of you on my email list, if you need to get information from me, please make sure you see me, you can follow me on Facebook, if you are on social media, or you can send me an email and I can add you to the newsletter distribution, but I send out bi-weekly updates as well, and that's all I have. Did I take too long?
No, you're fine.
Thank you, and have a great weekend.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so very much for coming out. I hope I don't start coughing, I've been coughing for over a week, I'm really trying not to. But anyway, District Four, not even Gilyard District Four, we are planning a back-to-school jamboree on August 5, and we really thought that we might have it at the park, but Lucasson Mill Park is really the only park that we have that works. We have one, See the Growth Park, but it's not, it's in dead condition, to be honest with you, but we're gonna work on that. But at any rate, so we're gonna have it at Renaissance Middle School, and our committee will have its first meeting on Thursday, and we have a group of people, approximately 15 people, who are committed to making sure that it becomes an excellent event. We're in the early stages of an education committee, and as you know, we've talked so much about economic development and how you really can't have excellent economic development if your schools are not excellent. And so, there are a couple of teachers and other educators that are committed, and this is something, and I'm so very happy that they want to do, that I'm gonna help with that. The third one is the Community Environmental Committee, and this is really important because we have a lot of environmental issues, not just in District Four, but in many of our districts. So, we're gonna start, start it and hope that it moves from district to district. The other two, there are two other committees that are in the conception stage, you'll hear more about them next month. And beginning next month, I will provide a District Four report to the See the Grove Community Association until the first Monday of every month. I will try my very best to drive membership, to help the association increase its membership, and, you know, and deal with, we're gonna deal with a lot of issues head-on. I'm still working on updating my webpage, spending a lot, a lot of time on the budget and the charter. There will be an event put on by homeowners in Hampton Oaks for a cleanup campaign on Highway 92 around that area in Budger Road. And last but not least, Parks and Recreation will be invited to the July meeting of the See the Grove Community Association. And so, I'm excited, we've gotten to a slow start, I'm catching up, so anyway, thank you.
First of all, I want to say Happy Pride and Happy Ramadan to anyone celebrating those two things this month. We do have a food policy council meeting Thursday at 6:00. The Food Policy Council is a group of conservative citizens, farmers, restaurateurs, and business owners that are trying to put together just a comprehensive green policy for our city. We don't just do food, although we are trying to create a growing South Fulton label to help circulate dollars and make sure that we're supporting people who grow in food in South Fulton, but they also cover zoning, sanitation, or we have a sanitation contract coming up, so they just look at all of these different areas to try and make recommendations so we can have a richer, greener city of South Fulton. So, I encourage you to come out to that. It is Thursday at 6:00 at the Mans estate, it's 7755 Hall Road. You can find out more information about this and a bunch of other stuff at my newsletter I do on every week. You can go to ColleenCares.com to sign up or see me afterwards. That's ColleenCares.com. And then lastly, I want to thank everyone for their thoughts and wishes and prayers for the loss of my mom last week. We will be having services next Friday, but more importantly, next Saturday, June 24, is the Susan G. Komen breast cancer race. So, I will be running, I know there are a lot of survivors out there, and a lot of people who've lost their loved ones as well, so I hope to see as many as possible out at the square Saturday, June 24. Thanks.
These city councilmen work so hard, I really don't have nothing to say. But let me say this. Colleen is an outstanding young man, and I can tell you that with the death of his mother, he didn't miss one beat in terms of doing his job as a city councilman. Didn't miss one nothing, my colleagues can attest to that. He was there, so my brother, we appreciate you for all that you have done under you. Secondly, sometimes we take things for granted. You know, you hear about police and fire, and sometimes you even hear about your checks, but if you have not had an opportunity to see them work, you'd miss them. Because ladies and gentlemen, I can tell you right now, they work. Reverend, Reverend Henry should be applauded for all that he's done. He did an outstanding job, and he even took to the road on Monday to go to the funeral. So, I won't, we talked about that a lot, I won't be lazy to die, it was great. I also like to acknowledge the presence of Donzella James, and if Donzella James is in the room. And also, I'd like to note the presence of a former county commissioner for 50 years Lastly, I'll tell you all this, it ain't easy doing this job for none, nobody sitting up here. We come through, we get a lot of scrutiny. Harder we work, the more scrutiny sometimes we get. But I can tell you that it's not stop eating everyone, oh, thank you, Ms. Watkins, for what you said, and we did hear you. And no, we, we got things gonna work on ourselves, all right, and we're gonna do that. But I can't find several more outstanding people to work with than the seven of us up here. And at the end of the day, after the first 100 years, 100 days, it seemed like 100 years. After the first 100 days, I'm gonna be proud to put out the accomplishments that this mayor and council has done in the first 100 days, and I think that you're gonna be pleased, not just scrutiny that we take from other folks, but dealing with other governments and trying to get ourselves together. We have to deal with that too. But in light of it, we have done all that we can do, you know, transparency, these guys got all these websites and whatever you call it, newsletter, social, you know, I'm old school, I told you to bring me some pencils and paper. And, but they're getting information out to you, they really are. Colleen Cares and all these other things, they're getting it out to you, and they still have the opportunity to do things like Fun Day, there's the opportunity to get bookbags for children. I mean, they're working very hard, so I applaud all seven of them. I'm just here to back them up. When they call for the bookbags, they, I'll be helping to hand them out. But I just want to say thank you to all of them, they're wonderful people and they're doing you a good job. Okay? Well, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to go into the executive session on real estate litigation personnel.
I would like to make the motion to go into that this session on real estate personnel and litigation.
Second.
Probably move to second, I'll raise a finger, aye?